Okay, it is now eight thirty and we are ready to begin. Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Sarah Stevenson Virtual Tuesday Morning Forum. I am Mary Johnson facilitator along with Laura McCladdie, Carlina Ivory, Jackie Walton Edwards, Natalie McElrath, Winston Robinson, Steve Johnston, and Saritha Sherrill. Our virtual forum runs from eight thirty to nine thirty. However, we stay online until nine forty-five for additional conversation if you can stay. We always begin with prayer. Ms. Saritha?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Put your heads, please. To our Creator, we are thankful for another day. We're thankful to witness another holy week last week. Thank you, God. Help us to rest in your unchanging promises of forgiveness, salvation, and life everlasting. Remember our nation this morning. Remember our state, our county, our communities, and our homes. And please, God, remember our children every place. It is in your Son Jesus's name we pray. Let us say together, amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much. Do we have any first timers with us this morning? Do we have any first timers? We don't have any first timers with us? Let me scroll through and look. Okay, it's like everybody has been here. Absolutely no first timers. Okay, so we've got the regular crew with us this morning. I see WCNC. Who's representing WCNC? Charlotte, you're on mute.
A computer logged in just before eight o'clock.
Oh, okay, that was a computer login.
I believe so.
Yeah, and that was the case with WSOC a while back also.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so we do have guests today, of course. Trying to get back to my page. Okay, here we go. Today, we have the City Council at-large candidates. And I'm gonna call them, I'm gonna call their names. And they're in alphabetical order, okay? Dimple Ashmira, Patrick Cannon, Larkin Eggleston, Luana Slack Mayfield, James Mitchell, and Braxton Winston. Okay, those are our six candidates at-large for City Council. I'm gonna give them each two minutes, okay, to introduce themselves. And for those of you who have questions, remember to put your questions in the chat. Also, the chat is not to be used for comments. Do not place comments in the chat. Only place a question in the chat, okay? So we're gonna start, are we gonna start with from the top? Dimple?
Good morning, Ms. Mary. Good morning, everyone. Great to see you all. And I appreciate the work that you're doing to keep Ms. Stevenson's legacy alive. I'm Dimple Ashmira, your Charlotte City Councilwoman at-large. I'm a working mother, a certified public accountant, and a fighter. I've served you on City Council since 2017. And I'm running for my third term to keep up, to keep the momentum that we have on affordable housing, on infrastructure, on public safety, and economic development. So many friends in this room, in this virtual room, have inspired me, have supported me, and yes, challenged me when it was needed. And I very much appreciate that. We've grown together, we have learned together. And our passion to create a better Charlotte is what fuels me, especially with my nine-month-old daughter Charlotte. So I really thank you all for this opportunity. And I look forward to sharing with you all on the work that we have done to tackle affordable housing and other issues. At the end of the day, it's not what we say, but it's what we do that matters. And my experience and my track record speaks for itself, that experience that you can trust. So I hope that I will have your continued trust, your support, and your prayers. Again, keep it simple. Vote for Dimple.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Patrick Cannon?
Hey, good morning, everybody. I'm Patrick Cannon, a native Charletean. Reared in the Charlemaiconburg schools. Had some odds against me when I was about, oh, about two and a half, three years old. Swallowed ten straight pens. And they didn't have the technology back in the day at Memorial Hospital to do anything about it. So they basically sent me home, telling my mother just to keep me calm, because there was nothing they could do. Well, after a series of days, all pens ended up passing through my system, not puncturing an organ or doing anything that would be harmful to me. When I said they passed through, they passed through. And I had a grandmother that went and did her thing and got those pens out. And I have them today to remind me that whatever odds that one may be up against, there is a God and you can get through whatever may be before you. I want to thank also the Tuesday Morning Breakfast Forum, of course, Mother Stevenson for doing all of what she's done to be able to bring all of us together here to discuss the very important issues of our community. I simply want to say that it's very important, from my perspective, as I've heard from the perspective of others, that we concentrate in the area of housing, that we concentrate in the area of transportation, that we also look at public safety. But also, more importantly, the most important thing I've heard is that we look at economic development, largely in part because we are dealing with poverty in our community at high levels. We're dealing with children that are coming out of CMS, who are not college-ready. We are dealing with an issue where there could be more blue-collar opportunities than there are white-collar opportunities. And not so much need for being more, but just a balance. And so where we can create balance, that's something I really want to make sure that I bring to the table. So for someone who is service-driven, result-oriented, and comes with a balanced perspective, I would ask that you consider me, Patrick Cannon, for Charlotte City Council at-large, beginning during early voting. What's April twenty-eighth runs through May fourteenth. Thank you again so much for the opportunity, and I look forward to the discussion.
Thank you. Larkin Eggleston?
Good morning, Ms. Mary. I don't know if Patrick meant safety pens or ink pens or what, but I was not prepared for that story at eight-thirty this morning.
Straight, they were straight pens.
I'm gonna have nightmares.
God is good.
I gotta shake that off real quick. I am Larkin Eggleston. I am in my second term as the District One Representative on the Charlotte City Council and have been a longtime friend of the Sarah Stevenson Tuesday Morning Breakfast Forum. Believe I came to my first one over a decade ago now with the former councilwoman Nancy Carter, who said, "If you want to get involved in this community, this is where you need to start." Because everybody who comes to this is engaged in this community and is working to make it a better place. And that was true then, it's true now, and I appreciate y'all having us. I never imagined, ten years ago, that I'd be now on my third time being one of the guest speakers. So that's an honor for me. And I've been proud to work on the things that I came into the Tuesday Morning Forum in 2017 and said I wanted to work on. I think since 2017, we've made immense progress on affordable housing. We've more than tripled the affordable housing bond and changed the way that we think about affordable housing, from just trying to build our way out of the problem to investing in things like critical home repair, which I know Ms. Mayfield was a big advocate to get started, to make sure that we're helping seniors pay off the difference between their rising tax bills because of increasing property values that might otherwise displace them, to invest in things like repairing and upfitting naturally occurring affordable housing, which we can deploy more quickly and more cost-effectively than simply trying to build new units. We've continued to make sure that we're modernizing our transportation network. I've led on issues like police reform and community safety, on issues like immigration and expansion of our nondiscrimination ordinance. And I think I've demonstrated that I can lead and build consensus on difficult issues. The other thing that I believe is one of the most important things for elected officials, and I've tried to live this, is to be accessible to the folks who elected me and frankly, to the folks who didn't vote for me. And I have consistently been available to people when they've needed advice. I haven't always given them the answers they wanted to hear, but I've been honest with them. And I've tried to be there to help them navigate what at times can be a complicated system. So again, as Mr. Cannon said, early voting starts next Thursday. And Election Day is May seventeenth. You get four votes for Charlotte City Council at-large, and I'd be honored to have one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Luana Slack Mayfield?
Good morning, Tuesday Morning Breakfast Forum. I am Luana. I have been around for many years. I am thankful that I am amongst those who actually had the chance to sit at the feet of Ms. Stevenson as well as my grandmother-in-law Ella Tally and to be able to learn from her. I have been in Charlotte for thirty-four years. For twenty-five of those thirty-four, I worked in the community volunteering. And in 2011, I ran for office. And I am proud that in my first term, an issue that I worked on as a community organizer, which was creating the language for "Ban the Box", and we attempted to have both the city and the county move language forward. Once elected, we were able to not only pass "Ban the Box", we started conversations regarding increasing the pay of our city workers. Unfortunately, that conversation is still needed today because you need to earn around fifty-three, fifty-four thousand dollars a year in order to live in Charlotte today with rent starting at twelve hundred dollars plus for a one-bedroom. But we started a conversation that moved our city forward. I'm proud of the Goodwill Opportunity Campus and identifying the land off of Wilkinson Boulevard, creating the city's TLC by CLT Housing Rehab Program, moving for domestic partner benefits before marriage equality became the key across the land, and staying engaged with the community even during this time that I have not been in office. So as I mentioned, when I served as the District Three Representative, I also had the opportunity to create the District Three Airport Job Fair that ran for seven years, where we had a thousand to fifteen-hundred individuals each year that came out to the job fair. And people were offered job opportunities on the spot. That was a plug-and-play that I created alongside of the staff with the city as well as with the airport. We also have to understand that for me, it is a triangle when we look at economic development, transportation, as well as housing. When we create opportunities for better jobs, we give people options and we give them choices. When we're talking about how the city can help protect our children and the role that the city has in funding programs, there also has to be checks and balances to ensure that we have an equitable process for those organizations that are doing good work and not just tapping the big organizations that have the right names behind them. We also need to look at how we move forward. Thank you.
Okay, we have Mr. James Smudgy Mitchell.
Before I get in trouble, Nancy, two minutes, right, Ms. McElrath?
And Natalie is our timekeeper.
All right. Okay, here I go. Good morning, Tuesday Morning Breakfast, James Smudgy Mitchell, Charlotte native, and thank you so much for over the years blessing me with your trust and prayers to serve in Charlotte City Council. Let me just remind you all the work we have done together. When they told us we couldn't build an economic development mall in District Two, we did that. When we had issues along the Batesville Road corridor, we built the first Metro Police Station. When they told us that we need a transit center along Batesville Road, we built the Rosa Park Transit Center. So when you think about what we have accomplished together, I think there's been things that have made your quality of life increase. When there's challenges in our neighborhoods, I've been the first to raise my hand for more affordable housing and more for upward mobility. When our entrepreneurs cried about participation with city contract, I helped redevelop the Charlotte Business Inclusion Area Program. When they said their baseball team couldn't come downtown to create economic development, I helped move the Charlotte Knights. And then there's this fifty-million-dollar basketball tournament that was in Charlotte for thirteen years. I helped recruit the CIAA Basketball Tournament. Then I'm gonna leave you with this. When I came before you saying we need to save the historic Excelsior Club, you challenged me to find the funding to save the Excelsior Club. And we did that. Let's continue to move Charlotte together. Let's continue to do it with you believing in me and trust me to vote, be one of your four votes, starting on April twenty-eighth, May seventeen. Charlotte has so much potential, but we can do this together. Vote James Smudgy Mitchell, and let's continue to have free food at Tuesday Morning Breakfast.
Okay, thank you so much, James. And Braxton Winston?
Good morning, Tuesday Morning Forum. It's good to see everybody. It's a great, great turnout. My name is Braxton Winston, and I am running for my third term on City Council as an at-large member. And I'll continue to work through the lens of working for a more equitable, accessible, and interconnected Charlotte. As I came before you many years ago, I told you that I believe that equity started in the way that we built neighborhoods, that we needed to build mixed-income communities close to good amenities and services. That's why from the very beginning, I pushed for a comprehensive planning process. And we produced the first, Charlotte's first comprehensive plan in forty-five years. So, you know, I will continue to really focus on the implementation of that plan, learning to use that plan as a tool and ensuring that our community is engaged and aware of the implementation process that will continue over many years, and in fact, over the next generation. I believe access is both physical and digital. That's why I've been working to make Charlotte one of the most digitally inclusive cities that is highlighted by a ten-million-dollar investment that we made just a couple of weeks ago to work on plans in our corridors. But of course, access is physical as well. And I continue the push for a multimodal transportation and transit system. It's something that I think City Council has to take hold of, and we have to get in the driver's seat for. And of course, in all these big ideas, we have to do it in an interconnected fashion. I'm a big proponent of working across the aisles of different bodies of government and figuring out how we can make complementary policy decisions. But of course, but taking most advantage of our office on City Council and what we can do to ensure that we have more efficient and effective governing processes. So those are the, that's the lens that I have been working from and I will continue to work, to work from. So please vote Braxton Winston for Charlotte City Council at-large as we work for a more equitable, accessible, and interconnected Charlotte.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank, thank, I want to thank all of the candidates. You all did a great job there. Okay, we do have questions that are in the chat. Let's see. First of all, let me read this. Participation in forums is a privilege sustained by agreement to stay on topic, to treat all participants with respect, and to honor decisions of facilitators. Violators may face immediate suspension of the privilege. Okay? Yvonne Finley has a question for all the candidates. And what we're gonna do, we'll start with Dimple and we'll go down the line here. Dimple, Patrick, and then Larkin, and then Luana, James, and Braxton. How will you work to change city policy to help close the racial wealth gap between blacks and whites? Let's just do that question first.
Have Mary. How much time are you giving them?
Let's give them a minute and a half. Because they, that's not a question they can answer. And, you know, I mean, that's a long-term answer, okay? So I'm gonna give them a minute and a half to say. So how will you work to change city policy to help close the racial wealth gap between blacks and whites?
So, Dimple? Yes, thank you, Ms. Mary. I'll try to stay within a minute and a half here. I'm glad that you asked this question because for the first time ever in city's history, we are working on Equity and Governance Framework. Mayor appointed me to chair the Environment Equity and Engagement Committee earlier this year. And this is an important work that is going to have an impact for generations to come. Braxton Winston and Renee Johnson are the committee members. In fact, we just approved Equity and Governance Framework draft to be presented to the full council, which is really going to address racial equity gap and systemic inequities that we have seen that has transpired over so many years. So this will apply to everything we do: affordable housing, economic development, public safety, infrastructure improvements, everything. And I look forward to presenting that to the Tuesday Morning Breakfast Forum as the full council does give a go-ahead. Then we will have an action plan that will tackle each policy: short-term, mid-term, long-term. And this is a huge undertaking. So this is going to take at least another three to four months before we finalize all the policies for community's feedback. Also, I want to highlight that City of Charlotte, along with the private sector, have invested over two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars in Mayor's Racial Equity Initiative to close the gap that we are seeing. Okay, here you go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was great. Thank you. Patrick?
Yes, and thank you so much for that question. The way I think we need to be working to close that gap is, one, we need to make sure we're talking to the city manager. We do have a council manager form of government. And so making sure that we're bringing staff along to understand the level of importance of being able to do this, I think is step number one. Step number two, from my perspective, is taking Charlotte really back from whence it came. Sometimes in order to go forward, you must go backward. What I mean by that is this. There used to be a day when we had a balance in this community between white-collar and blue-collar workers. The days of when we used to have Old General Tire. We used to have Fruehoff Trucking Company. We used to have Converse here. Those entities and others like them are no longer here anymore. We began to be more white-collar driven, nothing wrong with that, but we just need to create a balance. Because what happened was that that balance fell off. And now we see the level, numbers of poverty in terms of twelve to fourteen-some-odd percent in this community. It's unacceptable for over a hundred-and-twenty-some-odd-thousand people of eight-hundred-thousand for us to look that way as a city. And so I would propose making sure that we began to raise the dollar amount up from our Economic Development Fund, where right now those expenditures represent about six-point-three-million dollars of seven-hundred-and-eleven-million or so that's been out there and approved. And we use those monies to go toward like job skill training programs so, in targeted areas of our community, to be able to close the gap. Because without doing so, we'll remain in an imbalance and our community will not be what it needs to be in terms of going forward to make sure there's a place for all of us to live, work, raise a family, try to afford affordable housing, et cetera. And so thank you so much again for the question.
Thank you so much. That was great. Larkin Eggleston?
Thank you. I think the way we close the wealth gap between black families and white families in our community is we create opportunity. I think the city has been doing that. I think we can do more of it. Ms. Ashmira mentioned the Mayor's Racial Equity Initiative. I think investing in things like Johnson C. Smith University creates opportunity for the primarily black student body that goes there and graduates from there. We've talked about the corridors of opportunity. And Batesville Ford Road comes up a lot because that's the one we've started with in terms of really focusing on and investing in our corridors of opportunity. But it's only one of six. And we've got ones like Freedom Drive and Wilkinson Boulevard, West Boulevard. We've got areas in the black community that we've identified as places where government historically has not invested at the levels that they should to make sure that people have opportunities. So when we're investing in those corridors and we're creating the opportunity for folks to start a small local business and employ people from the community, we are creating opportunity for them to grow and to build intergenerational wealth. We're trying to shift more of a focus on our housing initiatives towards homeownership because we know that's one of the largest reasons that black families and white families throughout this country have the wealth gap that they have. It's because my grandparents could own a home and get a loan for a home when many black families in that era couldn't. And that's created intergenerational wealth in white communities that it hasn't in black communities. So I think it's creating opportunity. I think the city's doing that. And I think we've got to continue to push to make sure that more of our city contracts are going to MWSB's, minority and women's small business enterprises. We've got to continue to invest in those corridors of opportunity, continue to invest in our amazing HBCU at Johnson C. Smith, and make sure that people have the opportunity to create a real life-sustaining living for themselves and their family. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was great. Okay, Luana Slack Mayfield?
Thank you for the question and thank you for submitting this question, Ms. Yvonne. As was mentioned, Charlotte City Council is a council manager form of government. Council has the ability, and one of the things that I would like to encourage once elected to City Council at-large, is we have a real conversation and we actually pull the numbers. Let's look at a decade and look at the contracts that have been approved through City Council, through the manager's office. Let's look at what individuals receive access to those contracts and the dollar amount that are African-American and those that are not African-American. We have made billionaires in this city through our contracting. But a lot of our minority-owned businesses have not seen that success. We can also be very targeted in how we move forward and growing opportunity specifically for minority-owned businesses, and not just minority as white women-led, because we have studies that have proven that white women have benefited overwhelmingly when it comes to minority participation. But to be very targeted when we're talking about small business growth and development and having a designated financial line item that is there to not only help support, encourage, and grow, but also educate small businesses on how to be more successful in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, great. Okay, Mr. James Mitchell?
Mr. Mitchell, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
Muted, James.
You're still muted. There you go.
Thank you, everyone. So our minute and a half. So I think we have to be very direct in creating a strategic plan, what we want to do to really close this gap. We give a lot of lip service of what we want to do in this community, but I think the community needs us to take action. So here's a couple of action items. We know about the corridors of opportunity. We need to strictly invest in those African-American businesses that are in those corridors of opportunity so they can grow and provide jobs and create wealth to the residents. We know about the Mayor Equity Program, Dimple and Larkin, and they touched on it. But we need to be specific, what plan we gonna use? Not only Johnson C. Smith does well, the HBCU, but those businesses along the Batesville Ford Road corridor. We need a startup to access the capital for small biz owners like the county program. The city doesn't have one. And so the only way we're gonna close this gap, if we are strategic, but we're committed to make sure access to capital, access to opportunities, more training for our business. And just like several years ago, Councilwoman Mayfield and I worked on bringing the black enterprises to Charlotte for two consecutive years. And when you talked about our black entrepreneurs, they gain so much knowledge and wealth. We need to continue to make Charlotte one city for all. And we talk about the contracts. I've always been a strong advocate to make sure African-Americans, based on a disparity study, there's a tremendous disparity between white female and African-American business owners. So we need to be unapologetic black, unapologetic for helping our African-American business be successful.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And Braxton Winston?
Thank you very much. All of these answers were great. For me, this, everything comes back to the 2040 plan. And again, this idea of mixed-income communities. We, of course, want to stabilize and find out ways to create more affordable housing opportunities, both for rent and for purchase. But the idea of mixed-income communities is that you don't, especially in rapidly changing neighborhoods, you want to stabilize some in our community, but you also don't want the wealth that has been generated to leave. So when you see communities, for instance, that say, homes starting from three-hundred-thousand dollars. You know what that says? That says if you don't make a certain amount of money, you can't live here. But that also says if you make too much money, if you make four-hundred-thousand dollars or something like that, you're probably gonna look somewhere else to live, right? So we need to take all the lessons that we're learning from these corridors of opportunity programs as we pass the UDO and we get into the small-area-plan process. We need to take the lessons that we're learning to put good economic opportunities so that small businesses can grow, incomes can grow, and communities to grow. We don't want people to be able to generate wealth but then have to leave their communities further destabilizing those communities and breaking up neighborhoods. So I think that's incredibly important that we have a diversity of income, opportunities for black people to grow within their neighborhoods and so that they can continue to support small businesses, churches, and other institutions and schools. And again, I think the only way that we do this is if we continue to work across the grounds of government. For instance, people are not gonna stay in neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, now, Yvonne also has a question about federal reparations. Uh, programs to address and close racial wealth gap. Uh, gaps between black Americans and white Americans. And she says, will you use your platform? To advocate for these federal reparations. So, um, I'm gonna start with Braxton.
Uh, that's a great question. I mean, uh, I, I am, I am personally for uh, federal reparations. And I, I think it's important that you, um, we terminate federal reparations. Only the federal government can provide uh, true reparations. Um, but my focus, so we, that is something that, um, I invite uh, to have an intergovernmental committee. Um, which I am a co-chair of to, you know, consider for the legislative agenda. Um, but I am most interested in, in city policy. Uh, because we did partner with the federal government during urban renewal. Um, uh, to, to, uh, to, to, to pass policies that I think we need to repair and restore from. And that is something that we are doing in the, um, uh, the Equity Environment Engagement Committee that council member Ash Mara talked about. I think we are just a, a, about getting towards the finish line of being able to present, um, the full equity policy. Uh, to the full council and I'm excited, uh, to be able to do that.
Thank you. James Mitchell?
Yes, I, I welcome an opportunity to work with our federal government, uh, as it relates to reparation. You know, I, I would say this to you, when you have elected officials that you want to serve you. You got to make sure they do have the ability to cross over. And one thing I pride myself on has been a consensus builder. So key issues facing our community, especially this one, I have no problem with working with Congresswoman Adams. Uh, future Congressman Jeff Jackson and all our delegation to make sure that Charlotte, and we can look over the history. And, and there, there are some wounds that we need to work on and heal. And reparation to me is something I could totally be an advocate for and work with my colleagues at the federal government to make sure that that happens.
Okay, thank you. Luana Slak Mayfield?
Thank you for the question. The easy answer is yes, utilizing the platform to work with our partners. On the legislative end would be an opportunity. I've already had a number of those conversations as. My former colleague, Mr. Mitchell, just mentioned, we have worked across the aisle to grant, to bring development. To our city and to support growth and to identify funding coming into our city. It is. A natural pres- progression for us to look at, how can we use our voices? As African Americans who are elected to city council and even on a state level. To partner with our delegation and our representatives in Washington DC to move forward the conversation of. What does a federal reparations plan really look like? And how do we ensure access to all, especially one key area? Is around housing accessibility, which we can go back to the GI Bill and move forward. Who had access to housing, who had access to build generational wealth, who had access to purchase land? Looking at those key factors, that will help us to create the foundation for us to move the conversation forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Larkin Eggleston?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Winston and I, just a month ago, were in DC meeting with members of our state's congressional delegation and their staffs. And we've got those relationships to have those conversations. And it's a conversation that I'm very willing to have. I think to his point, it is important that we advocate for the things that can be done in Washington and Raleigh. But it's also important that we do the things we can do here in Charlotte, because the federal government was not the only government. That was doing communities of color wrong in the past and, and still in many instances to this day. So I think we can, we can more easily right the wrongs of what local government has done to harm communities of color. Uh, but it's absolutely a conversation I'm willing to have with our partners in Raleigh and Washington. It's also important that we make sure that Raleigh and Washington are comprised of, of representatives who have shared values with our community. And oftentimes, that's not been the case in the last decade. And so it, it will prove difficult if we don't send the right people to Washington. And certainly Charlotte and Congresswoman Adams has the right person there, but we need more like Congresswoman Adams in Congress. To be able to lift up those issues and, and frankly, move the needle on them. But. From, from Charlotte to Raleigh to Washington, those are conversations we can and will have and, and we've got a lot we can do here locally.
Thank you. Uh, Patrick Cannon?
You know, years ago, I, I ran on the idea of working together works, uh, largely in part. Because whether it's the private sector, public sector, faith-based community, nonprofits. We all have to come together to be able to make things happen across the board. And that should be the case, uh, as well in Washington. Uh, being able to work with representatives there, uh, across the board, both Democrats, Republican and independents is gonna be important. Uh, and so, short answer, of course, is, is yes to that. Uh, and I, I know Dr. Faloke somewhere is smiling. Uh, hearing the answers he's hearing about right now, uh, on this subject, because it was like pulling teeth years ago to get anybody to comment on. Being in favor of something as such. Uh, and so. Uh, it's gonna be important from my perspective that we, we also repair, as been, as was stated, um, the wrongs here locally. And I think we have to concentrate on that here, uh, in the city. Making sure that there's access to affordable housing for all people, those that are coming back from, uh, being incarcerated. Uh, looking to reenter our society and looking at things they are having to go against and be challenged with. Uh, of course, and then those individuals that haven't been down that road, but yet need some level of inclusion. We have to be intentional about all that we do, and I think we can do that going forward as relates to working together, because working together does work.
Thank you. Dimple Esamira?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mary. So my fellow panelist members. Touched on this, that governance is hard. It takes six votes to get anything done, even to put an item on federal legislative agenda. Uh, where it requires building alliances, building consensus and negotiation while keeping, while. Staying true to our core values. So, uh, federal reparations will require majority of the council. To, majority of the council's support to put that on legislative agenda. And I support that. In addition to, um, the federal level advocacy, uh, Larkin touched on this. Where we also need to take an action here at the local level and equity policy that we are currently working on. Will, uh, will do that. Uh, that looks at everything, especially how, uh, neighborhoods were displaced. Especially neighborhoods of color and how as a city council at the local level. Create policies that intentionally invest into this neighborhood through our opportunities of corridor. Where we have committed over sixty million dollars in opportunities of corridors. Investing in those areas to bring jobs and opportunities, this area that have been left behind for many years. Uh, investing into our JCSU campus and also being intentional about. Investing into our minority and women-owned businesses and giving them an opportunity as we build this catalyst throughout the city. Uh, so it's going to take federal level, state level, working together to right the wrong. That has happened over many years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, this question is for everyone again. Um, do you believe that each government agency should and can work collaboratively to develop plans? To address the city, counties, issues that overlap? If yes, how would you facilitate that change? And this is about the city and the county governments and the policies and issues, well, issues that overlap. How could you facilitate that change? We're gonna start with, uh, Luana Mayfield on this one.
Thank you. Again, it's a easy answer of yes. Actually, that has happened over the years individually. With council members on Charlotte City Council, working directly with county commissioners. The greater conversation for me is a conversation with regarding. The elected bodies as well as the managers, both the county manager and the city manager. The reality is, we have some tension in the leadership styles of the management. Which causes challenges for the individuals, both on city council and county commission, to move certain. Language and policy forward. When I hosted quarterly town halls, when I served you for eight years. We all, I always made sure that city staff was working very closely with county staff. As well as members of the school board in order for us to bring all the resources to the community at these town halls to make it as accessible. As possible for the residents to gain the information and build the relationships. We do need to have a real conversation with our leadership, since we are a manager council, a council manager form of government. That will help to set the tone, not only for all the staff, but it would empower and encourage. The elected officials to continue to building the relationships that overlap. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, James Mitchell?
Yes, at the end of the day, I think citizens want their leaders to cooperate and solve issues. And when I was Chair Economic Development, I worked with the county economic development. We did a joint, we had a joint committee meeting. And that topic then was Eastlamall. How do we work together, incentivize to make sure Eastlamall can come back? And be a true destination for our community. And then I think there's two other issues that the county cities should work hand in hand on. One is affordable housing. County now is looking in a way that they can stop investment companies from coming. The city, we need to put our city on land, part of affordable housing. And I think collectively, we can come with a nice policy that you, the citizen, citizens will say, look at our two government bodies working together. Then the passion for me is, uh, small business. The county has a ni- nice startup capital. For those who have a five eleven credit score to provide funding. The city, we need to have our own startup program as well. And so I do think there's opportunities, small business, affordable housing. As well, how do we incentivize companies who come to our city and county and make sure our priorities at the forefront? Hiring, training, and make sure they have community benefits that will benefit our citizens.
Okay, thank you. Braxton?
Thank you for this question. If anybody could follow, and this is something that I'm passionate about. Um, one thing I've learned in, in the five years that I've been on council, um, is that while our staffs work together in, in the county and CMS. And, and we see each other passing in the community between county commissioners and, and city council members. There is no officially san- sanctioned, um, forum for us to work together on comprehensive policy issues. And we have different, um, responsibilities under the law, but all of these things supplement one another. For instance, when you're dealing with community violence, of course, you need law enforcement, but you have to deal with mental health. And then you have to work, um, with in, uh, what's happening in schools. Those things can only work if the policy, policymakers are at the table working together. So this is something that we're tackling in intergovernmental committee and is something that myself and Mark Jarrell, um, are, 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 are in process with. Um, we will be meeting as, as the intergovernmental committee together, um, next May to discuss just this. How do we create a sanction table, uh, where we as policymakers are working together? Um, and, and, and not wasting time to have good ideas about, uh, uh, good, pass good ideas around. But to turn those ideas into action. Um, it's disappointing that it's never happened before, um, but it's very promising. Uh, in the direction that we are headed.
Thank you. Larkin?
Thank you. So to Mr. Winston's point about the intergovernmental, uh, relations committee meeting together with the counties. Um, he and I were both part of that taking place the first time, as far as we're aware, the first time it ever took place. Um, I was the co-chair of that committee in, in our first term. Mr. Winston's co-chair of that committee now. And I do think that those meetings, having a more formal way to engage with our county partners. Uh, we do each have individual relationships because of our overlapping districts. Uh, I get the opportunity to work with Commissioner Jarrell a lot. I think those individual relationships are valuable, but having a formal. Process by which we engage is important too. And I think there's also room for engagement beyond just the borders of Mecklenburg County. Because there are best practices we can learn from communities throughout the state and throughout the country. Uh, Mr. Mitchell and Ms. Mayfield have long been involved in National League of Cities, and that's something the city of Charlotte is still very involved in. Um, Ms. Mayfield got me involved in the Democratic Municipal Officials Organization, which is a national organization. I'm the city's representative on the North Carolina League of Municipalities and the Central Indiana Council of Governments right now, which are. Uh, statewide and regional respectively, organization that brings together city leaders and city and county leaders on the, on the co- council government side. Um, not only to create regional strategies and cooperation, but to share best practices. Because Charlotte doesn't have to reinvent the wheel every time we want to come up with a good idea on how to tackle a challenging issue. There are communities throughout the country that are testing new ideas, um, running pilots, seeing what works and seeing what doesn't. And, and we can borrow good ideas from those communities and make them fit for Charlotte. So. I think intergovernmental is important, both at the county commission and school board level, but it's important across our region, across our state, and frankly, across the country.
Okay, uh, Dimple Esamira?
Thank you. So speaking of the collaboration, we have mobility network plan. That city council is looking to get, uh, support from the region. I mean, that's a great example of how we work together and how we create, uh, allies throughout the region. To be successful, uh, because that is going to help entire region, right? Currently, our transportation system is not reliable, it's not efficient. So if someone who depends on our public bus system to get to work. Uh, they are not being successful right now. And, and I think that is where the rubber meets the road. Is how do we use the intergovernmental committee? How do we use the collaborative approach to get the buying from the general assembly to be successful in this initiative? Intergovernmental committee has made great strides in starting the relationships in, um, however. We are, we still, as, as Braxton mentioned this earlier, we still don't have a forum right now where. City, county officials sit down together and have, uh, have conversation on difficult issues. Transportation is one of them, economic development, affordable housing. And I think that should be the focus for at least next year as we tackle these important issues. And really address some of the pain points that we have had over past, I mean, over decades.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Patrick Cannon?
Mr. Cannon, I believe you're on mute.
You're muted.
Can I be heard now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know. Question was, uh, do I believe, do we believe that each government agency should and can work collaboratively, collaboratively to develop and. Plan to address the city and counties' issues that overlap. Uh, obviously, you know, there is functional consolidation that's taking place. Uh, and, and through that, um, I think, you know. Entities have been trying to work together as best they can, but in listening to Dimple, uh, and others, uh, it, it's. Uh, we're not in a very good place. The people are not coming to the table to be able to talk about, uh, the issues that are affecting both our city and our county between. School board, city council, and county commission. Uh, there has to be a level of willingness, there has to be a level of open mindedness. And there has to have to be people at the table who are willing to be objective. And so from my perspective, uh, in asking the question, how would I facilitate the change? Uh, I would encourage management to, to come together to, um, you know, say, hey, this is something that's very important to us. Uh, I would, uh, ask that there be a development of norms, uh, so that, uh, no one is disrespected in that space. And we can actually get some things done. Uh, and then, uh, finally, uh, show some true intent, uh, regarding, uh. What the positives can be if we do come together to work together for the common good of our community.
Thank you. Okay, we have another question here. What plan do you have to keep cats drivers? Safe. Okay, um, and I'm gonna let those who are currently on city council. To answer that question first. If you're currently on there, let's see, Dimple, I'm gonna call on you. Okay, you're on mute, Dimple. What plan do you have? Or does the city have to keep cats drivers safe?
So our CATS director has implemented, um, multiple steps to ensure, to ensure the safety of our bus drivers. And our bus operators. Number one, uh, cats are, cats have implemented partnership. Well, they always had a partnership, but with CMPD, where CMPD is patrolling our transit stations and. Um, to ensure that bus operators feel safe. And, uh, this is increased monitoring than what we had before. Uh, second is, uh, providing our bus operators de-escalation training. So when there is a dispute, uh, how do they resolve it in a manner that doesn't, uh, lead to violent behavior? Um, and also now, um, we are looking at. Um, creating a barrier between bus operator and a passenger, uh, so that. Uh, while complying with our ADA requirements. So our CATS director, John Lewis, he's work, he's looking at. So our CATS Director John Lewis, he's worked, he's looking at how we can create these barriers and implement those throughout our bus system. So that's currently being worked on. But here are three things that CATS have done to keep our bus operators safe and ensure that we are being aggressive in keeping all of our employees safe. At the end of the day, no one, no one should be afraid to go to work and no one should be afraid to be at work. And I know that is a problem that CATS is trying to address right now.
Okay, thank you. Now, Braxton and Larkin, do you have anything to add to that? Because we are really running out of time and I want to.
Yes, I do. And I do have to jump myself. I'm sorry. Calendars got mixed up. I think there's two things. One is a medium, medium term. Overall, we need to, this is part of the massive investment that we need to make into our public transportation system. We need to make sure that we have enough staff that is equipped, right? We need to have, make sure that we have enough drivers. We need to make sure that we have enough mechanics so that our buses and our trains are able to be operated safely. We need to make sure that we're invested in the infrastructure for our bus drivers so they have safe places to stop. And when they're dropping off and picking up people at the stops, they're well-lit and they're safe and comfortable. That's just not the case and far too many instances now. I also, I've been a big advocate. I think we need to take the public safety component of our transit system under our own hands. We need to work with CNPD and the sheriff's office as opposed to outsourcing contracting to corporate police that we have no oversight over and we cannot employ our innovative techniques that we're doing around public safety. For instance, we need to be flooding our trains and our buses with mental health experts, with social workers, with folks that are proficient in dealing with youth. Those are, those are the types of first responders that need to be along with our, 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 our law enforcement officers that could provide the type of safety net that is needed in our public transit system. You're not going to arrest your way out of this problem, but you have to invest and service it in the proper manner, and we're not doing that right now. Please feel free to reach out to me at votbraxton.com, but I do have to jump right now. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much for participating. We thank you for your time. Thank you.
Mary, I know you want to get to another question, so I'll be super brief. All I would say is I was going to make a point similar to Mr. Winston's, which is we do need more security and we need more of that security to be employed by the city as, as members of CNPD or as non sworn officers who are trained in things like mental health and social work. But because right now we're having trouble filling some of those CNPD positions, and that's why the city council over the last handful of years, while holding police accountable and strengthening some of the policies that we have to make sure that police interactions with our community have more positive outcomes than they have historically. While we've been doing that, we've also been giving pay raises to make sure that we're attracting and retaining the best people and that they are as well-trained as they possibly can be. But when we hire these third-party security companies because we frankly need more, more, more men and women out there helping to protect people like our bus drivers, they don't have that same level of accountability. They don't have the same level of training. And, and frankly, it's just not as good an option. So we've got to have more people to protect our drivers and frankly, all of our essential workers around the city.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. This is going to be our, we are at 9:23 and I want to respect everyone's time, although we will stay on until 9:45 for those of you who can stay. But this is going to be the last official question here before we move into that part of the forum. What are ways to incentivize landlords who intentionally keep their property affordable for tenants? Okay, I'm going to take that part first. And let's see, James Mitchell, we'll start with you. Are you still here?
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Oh, yes.
You know, we, we have tried several things in our toolkit and we have not been successful when it comes to making sure that landlords will hold on to their land. And so I, I think what we really need to do is do more of an educational opportunity. Partners like Dream Key, who used to be the Charlotte Housing Partnership, we need to make sure that we allow them to get out and educate our citizens, particularly those who are in growing areas to hold on to your land. And then the city has to take a step as well. We have city-owned land that we have not put into affordable housing deals that we need to do a better job of, particularly land around transit corridors. We need to make sure that the city does a better job of educating particularly those communities like Seversville, who when I was a district two rep saw tremendous growth. Land was for $57,000 of being sold, and then they was putting a half a million dollar homes on that same parcel. I think city, that is our responsibility to educate, to inform, and make sure our citizen buy-in, the whole affordability strategy we're trying to put in our community. Because as we know, gentrifications continue to go different areas of our community, and we need to build one Charlotte that those who are relocating think Charlotte is prosperous, and those who've been here 15, 20 years also can benefit from Charlotte prosperity.
Okay, now, let's see, I am moving. Now, we're talking about ways to incentivize landlords who intentionally keep their property affordable for tenants. Lawana.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. I'm hitting my timer. So I read the question. So if possible, I want to answer the full question that was typed in. Because we had, I had very specific ideals and goals when I was able to work with my colleagues and they supported my recommendation for the TLC by CLT program that went in and did rehab work prior to what has happened in the community with 2020 and the high costs. The market, when we talk about incentivizing to keep properties affordable, the challenge is, is my level of affordability is not necessarily the level of affordability of my neighbor. So Charlotte is still very affordable for a number of people that are moving here from much more expensive communities. One of the ways, has many ways have been tried to incentivize the landlords, but the reality is, is it is a communal conversation. How much money do you really need to make? Because if you have the ability to charge someone $1,400, $1,500 a month and receive $800 to $900 a profit, I don't think you want the answer to be it's government to write a greater check to offset that. So we can work with our delegation to try to look at some language to create some parameters in order to really help our residents who are most in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Larkin.
Thank you. Quickly to the city on land piece. Last year, we did have our staff go through the exercise of inventorying all the city-owned land and identifying which parcels could be eligible for housing, creation of housing. We could put that piece in as the city's skin in the game to get people to come in and build affordable housing on those properties. We identified six with potential for three others, half of which are in South Charlotte in areas where we've not historically had as many opportunities for affordable housing. So we're doing that. I think that one of the ways that we ensure things remain affordable is what, something I talked about earlier, which is our investment in naturally occurring affordable housing. If we take older housing stock and, and outfit it, we can do that more cost-effectively and we can extend the timeline or the horizon of how long that property is affordable. So things like, as Mayfield just mentioned, repair, keep people in their homes. Help them with the investments that they need to make to keep that home up to a high-quality living condition and keep them in their community. That's a home they can pass on to their children and their grandchildren, and it remains affordable. Reinvest in older housing stock that simply just needs a little bit of TLC, no pun intended to the program Lawana was referring to, but just needs a little bit of love, and we can keep people in those in an affordable way. If we don't do those things, what's going to happen is those homes, those apartments, all of those living opportunities are going to be wiped clean and we're going to have new construction. And new construction is rarely going to be affordable without significant government subsidies. We're doing some of that, but that can't be the only solution. So we've got to continue to invest in the people that are already in some of these affordable homes because they've owned them for so long, or continue to invest in multifamily that we can put some money into to extend that horizon of affordability.
Okay, thank you. Patrick.
I think the, the mayor and city council could consider something called a land use mitigation fund. This is also called like a landlord guarantee or a risk reduction fund. Essentially, the mitigation fund essentially is like an added protection for landlords who are willing to reduce screening criteria to rent to someone with limited income. They could have a poor rental history, or they could even have a criminal history. If there is excessive damage that's actually done to a unit or a loss in rent or legal fees beyond the security deposit, landlords can basically be reimbursed for damages up to a specified amount. That's something I would suggest that a mayor and council could consider.
Thank you. Dimple Esamira.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So Larkin touched on this earlier. City has intentionally taken inventory of our, of our land that we, city owns, and we have utilized that for our affordable housing. Continuing to invest in NOAS because that is cost-effective, naturally occurring affordable housing to ensure that people can continue to stay in place. And also investing in our Aging in Place program. We had Aging in Place program. Now it's called Staying in Place program because that program helps families stay, continue to age without having to be displaced. So those are, and also TLC by CLT that Lawana had championed when she was on the council. So all of, it's going to take multi, multi-tier approach to tackle this issue because as you can imagine, affordable housing is an issue that is over a billion-dollar crisis that our city faces. And this is going to take multiple programs for us to tackle that. This is going to take partnership with the private sector, nonprofits. And this is really also going to take building economic opportunities in every part of our city so that Charlotte is not divided in haves and have-nots.
Thank you so much. And I do want to thank all of you for your participation today. This has been wonderful.